Madam President, I move the approval of the printed council proceedings from April 8th and April 22nd, 2019.
We have a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
We are to the consideration of late items.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I remove, move the suspension of Council Rule Number Nine in order to consider a late item as part of the regular portion of the meeting this evening. And that late item is the acceptance of the National Interior, Department of Interior's, National Park Service grant for Project Pave the Way.
All those in favor of spending the rules say aye. Aye, pose, same sign. We will take that up under the appropriate time during that.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies. We have a mayoral proclamation and a council tribute, both in recognition of the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement for their annual scholarship dinner.
All right, and we thank you for waiting so patiently. Would you please come down into the well so that we can recognize you? Councilmember Washington and Mayor. Yeah. Do you have everybody lined up, Lorenzo? Okay.
Okay. What we have before us is, it's LACLA, how I know it, but it's the Greater Lansing Area Labor Council for Latin American Advancement.[116.11][116.11](laughing) And what we're celebrating is their seventh annual scholarship dinner. And LACLA is a grassroots organization. It was founded in 1972 with the vision to create an environment and political empowerment for Latino working families. LACLA is a national organization with chapters throughout the United States. It is driven and directed by Latino labor leaders who understand the importance of unionization in helping workers secure rights and protections on the job, empowering them to become voices for justice and change in their community. I'm going to let the LACLA members actually talk a little more about it, but what I want to do is I want to move this resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of Lansing City Council hereby congratulates and wishes much success to the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement of Greater Lansing Area Chapter at their seventh annual scholarship dinner for its extraordinary efforts to encourage all citizens to vote, register to vote, and educating Latinos and others about the importance of unions in improving the quality of life for all. Thank you so much for all you do, really, and for encouraging the next generation that we so desperately need. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Washington. We have a motion on the resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And this is yours. And Maria, if you would like to speak and introduce the other members here.
Sure. My name is Maria Vancor. I am the president of this chapter. I have Florencio Hernandez, who is my vice president, Martha Bobbio, who is my treasurer. We have Maria Enriquez, who's been a member forever with us. We have Bonnie, Israel Bonnie DeGruy, as our trustee, and we have Eileen Brooker as a trustee. And we are very humbled and honored to receive this tribute. We have been working really hard educating our members, not only Latino families, but all working families and families that need some kind of word or education or guidance. We also help out, we volunteer in many areas. We want to be, we are part of this community and we want to continue working and helping and volunteering as much as we can. Florencio has been an asset to our chapter. We are given scholarships. We've been given scholarships for the past seven years now. And Florencio, or Florencio has helped us out a lot. Speaking of Lorenzo, my other member Lorenzo is here too, so. Flo, would you say a few words about our scholarship, please?
Yes, thank you so much for this opportunity. We do have four scholarships this year, $750 each, going towards, or going to, for students from the Greater Lansing area. And our committee has actually worked really hard to sort of go out there and solicit the applications from students in our area to help them pursue higher education. And so they will be acknowledged at the Seventh Annual LACLA Scholarship Dinner, which is on Tuesday, May 7th, at Local 652. Doors open at 5:30, program begins at 6:00 PM. You guys are all welcome.
Thank you. And we have the mayor that has a few words and a plaque as well. Thank you.
I don't want to, I don't want to repeat, but I know I've, I have been to the LACLA Dinner several times, and I greatly appreciate all that our folks here are doing, advancing the Latino cause of priorities, doing it as labor. It's always, it's always a lot of fun. I always learn a lot when I go to the dinners. So I'm going to do my very best, we were just talking about it, do my very best to get there. Turns out we have a few things that night, but Lorenzo is nothing if not persistent.[368.37][368.37](laughing) Everybody knows this, and that's okay. But I am persistent. We also, we drew up a proclamation. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Much of it is very similar to what the council member wrote, but the ending is a little different. "Now therefore, I, Andy Shore, Mayor of the City of Lansing, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2019, as Labor Council for Latin American Advancement Day in Lansing. I encourage all residents to join me in honoring, in honoring LACLA and congratulating them on their seventh annual scholarship dinner. I wish you continued success. May your important work within our community continue to flourish." Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, and before you leave, I think Clerk Swope has a couple of comments he'd like to make as well.
Yeah, I just want to say that LACLA is one of the groups that we work with doing voter registration, and they are out in the, in their, beating the bushes and getting people register, and the work that you do is really important. I can't make your dinner since it's on an election day, and I'll be administering an election, but I hope that you require everyone in attendance to wear an "I voted" sticker.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Yes, absolutely.
You can take that with you.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello, darling.
You look great.
Thank you, thank you. Hello, how are you? Good. Good.
Thank you again, as always.
I am good. I'm good to see you. All right, Mr. Clerk. Do we have comments by council members? Any, Councilmember Washington?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to announce that we will be having our monthly first ward meeting this Saturday, May 4th. As always, it's 10:00 AM to noon. It's at the Board of Water and Light Depot on South Washington in Riptown. Excuse me. If you can't get there, it's 10:00 to noon. If you can't be there by 10:00, come anyway. If you can't stay until noon, please come anyway. If you have children and you need to bring them, bring them. This is for everybody. You don't have to be in the first ward. We will be discussing city matters. We will have a special guest, Carol Wood, and she will help me to discuss the budget and where we are so far. And everybody's welcome. You don't have to live in the first ward. So I hope to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you. Other councilmember comments? Any other councilmember comments? Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I'm so busy getting my photos ready to send to Lorenzo, I forgot my speech.[613.72][613.72](laughing) Anyway, they look really good. So, couple things going on in the near future. One, super important, is the first South Lansing Farmers Market of the outdoor season is this Thursday. So, Lorenzo, I should see you on Thursday. Yeah, I know, it's right for you. So, we do it every year. It's every week on Thursdays. It's from, from May through the end of October. The only two days that we take off are the Fourth of July and Halloween. But the thing I want to stress is for anyone in the community that's using EBT, this is an opportunity to stretch your food dollars. Any of the farmers markets in Lansing, all of that, them actually, the outdoor ones, do this. If you use your EBT card, you spend $20, we give you $20 in free fresh fruits and vegetables. So, all summer long, like, we have 25 markets, and that's $500. Every single week, you can get $20 in free fresh fruits and vegetables. So, I don't know anybody who's on food assistance who couldn't use an extra 500 bucks worth of free fresh fruits and vegetables. So please, take advantage of that. Our market is at 800 West Barnes, which is the St. Casemore parking lot in South Lansing, and it's open from 3:00 to 7:00, again, every Thursday, so please come out to that. Thanks.
All right, are there any other councilmember comments? Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So the first announcement, there is going to be a pop-up, pop-up park party, which will be Saturday, May 4th, 11:00 AM, at the Southside Community Coalition. That's at 2101 West Homes. And the Greater Lansing Realtors Association is actually putting this on in conjunction with the Southside Community Coalition and Southwest Action Group. The purpose is really to just kind of highlight Beacon Park, all that's being done at Beacon Park, some of the things that the Southside Community Coalition are doing, and then actually to highlight some new park equipment. There will be installation of interactive art, picnic tables, new picnic tables will be featured, a number of games. They're actually installing one of those mini library, community libraries, free library, I should say, deck boxes for equipment and the like. So everybody is, is welcome again. That is Saturday, May 4th, at 11:00 AM at Southside Community Coalition. The second announcement, we are once again going to partner with Pastor Brad Dryness of the South Church of the Nazarene to clean up Edgewood Boulevard. It is not nearly as dense in terms of trash as it was last year, thank goodness. Took us about five to six hours last year to clean that up. We are not, we hope it won't take that long this year to have the same type of impact. So again, that is May 5th, so it'll be the day after the pop-up park party. And we are meeting at 900 West Townhomes. They have a leasing office right there at 900 West Edgewood Boulevard, 10:00 AM. We will have coffee, donuts, we'll distribute vests and guests, vests, sorry, and gloves, as well as trash bags and things of that nature, talk about strategy, and then we will deploy. And then the last announcement, Councilman Garza actually referenced our joint constituent contact meeting that we had last year. It was very well attended. I think we had probably 65 to 70 people come out. It was a fantastic contact meeting. We had a lot of information that was conveyed. We are once again going to have a joint constituent contact meeting. We'd like to hopefully get that to kind of a biannual, probably in terms of frequency. And we had intended to have another one last year, and it just never materialized. So we are going to have a joint constituent contact meeting, May 11th, from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. That is at the Plumbers and Pipefitters Hall at 5405 South MLK. So we hope you come out.
Okay, are there, okay, are, are there other councilmember announcements? I, I have a couple. First of all, I want to remind the public that on May 2nd, at 6:00 PM, the city will, the city council will be having their committee of a whole at Foster Center to discuss the budget. This is your opportunity to come to us and tell us what you've heard so far about the budget, what you agree with, what you might not agree with, what you'd like to see us spending money on or not spending money on. This is one of two that we will be having. Our next one will be on May 9th, and that will be again at 6:00 PM, and that will be at the Southside Community Center. So this is your opportunity to talk to us. There are flyers in the back, as well as, this is on Facebook, and we've also notified the press, so we hope you will come out and participate. Also, on May 6th, at 5:30, at the beginning of our committee of a whole meeting, we will be honoring Tony Benavides, and we will be doing the renaming of the chambers on that night. And so anyone that would like to come down for that, what we will do is have the ceremony, will call us to order, we'll, we'll go out into the foyer, we will have the unveiling of the signs at 5:30, and then we'll come back in and do our council, our committee of a whole meeting. And again, that's at 5:30. Yes, it's, it's ready.[962.23][962.23](laughing) It was that look. Yes, we have them. In fact, we have them in, in, on the desk, so, so we have them in our hands, so we can go ahead and make this official. So I just wanted to remind people of those two opportunities. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you. Yes, we are a week and a day away from the millage election, so I encourage everyone to get out and vote, Tuesday, May 7th. There's still time to get an absentee ballot. We're issuing those in our offices up until the day before the election at 4:00, and then people registering on Election Day can actually get an absentee ballot when they register. We will be open at our office at 2500 South Washington Avenue this Saturday, from 8:00 AM until 4:00 PM. And just a reminder that under the Proposal 3 that was adopted last year, voters do not need a reason. Everyone is allowed to vote absentee if they want. So lots of opportunities for you to, to vote. Of course, the polls will be open, your regular polling place, from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM on Election Day, Tuesday, May 7th. And with that, we are to community event announcements. Is there anyone with a community event to announce in the audience? All right, seeing none, I'll announce the closing of the sign-up for public comment, and that's the blue sign-in sheet in the back, if, if you wish to address city council. Also, we do have a show cause hearing. If you are the owner or agent of 840 Maple Hill, you need to sign in on the green form to be able to speak about that. And we'll be picking both of those up in just a couple of seconds here. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We've got a variety of things going on. I think Councilman Hussein mentioned the "I love my city," and that on my list as well, on May 5th, that's going to be going on all day, and they do things all day. I'm really glad they're going to Edgewood. I know last year, you had just had that cleanup, and I mentioned it to the pastor there, and we decided we should coordinate a little bit more, so I mentioned that and a few other things, and I'm glad you also got with them, because that's always an area of need that needs to be cleaned up. So, but we will have many people who are skipping church this Sunday to go and clean the City of Lansing, so we appreciate that, and folks will join. On the 30th, on April 30th, our Housing and Neighborhood Resource Summit in the first ward will happen at Patton Hill or Old Fairview. It's from 6:00 PM to 7:15. We get a lot of folks there, a lot of resources for neighbors, so everyone is welcome to join. Next Wednesday, or is it this Wednesday? It is next Wednesday, or this coming Wednesday, we'll be doing our Walking Wednesday, and we'll be at the Capital Area District Library downtown on Washington Square. For those who missed the last one, last Wednesday, we were in the Eckert Power Plant, and we had something like 150 people there, going up in shifts of 10. That has to be a record for, for us. I did not go up. I stayed at the bottom and welcomed people and watched people play the Beanbag Game, which was hilarious. But, but a lot of people did go up, and a lot of people came out with great pictures, and I think it was, it was wildly successful. On, let's see, on May 11th, we have our Neighborhoods in Bloom Corridor Planting, and then on May 14th, we have our Love Lansing Celebration, which is at SWAC, the South Washington Office Complex, at 6:00 PM. So I hope everybody will join us. Tickets are available. And then past that, I wanted to, to thank the Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Alumni Chapter. They surprisingly gave me a very nice lifetime achievement award at a wonderful Women of Achievement Dinner. I am not a woman of achievement, so it was even more of a surprise, but it was a wonderful event and a wonderful dinner, so I'd like to express my thanks to them.
Thank you. With that.
Okay, we are to the show cause hearing. It is in consideration of orders to make safe or demolish 840 Maple Hill Avenue.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is 800, 840 Maple Hill Drive. The SEV on this home is $26,500. It's estimated repairs $93,499. The demolition board determined that the subject building and any accessory structure was dangerous, and in accordance with the provisions of the City of Lansing Housing and Premises Code, they scheduled, excuse me, a make safe or demolish hearing is scheduled today in the city council chambers. I think that's about it.
Okay, we did not have anyone sign in for that show cause hearing.
And that will be referred back to the Public Safety Committee.
Okay, then we are to public comment on legislative matters, and legislative matters include all the items on the consent agenda and resolution for action, as well as the late item, which is taking action on the Pave the Way Federal Grant from the National Park Service. And the first speaker is Lonnie Simpson, and he's followed by Loretta Stanaway. And councilmembers, you have a handout that's kind of in the order that he's going to talk about of his, where were those put?
If you could wait just a second, sir.
Just one second, sorry. I thought they were handed out.
We want to make sure that the councilmembers have the information that you provided as they go through this. The speaker.
It's, it's the photos from the claim, but in the order that he's going to talk about.
All right, thank you. All right, sir, you may come up to the microphone now. Thank you.
Right here?
Yes, right here. Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
How y'all doing today? First of all, I was fined 900 and something dollars by the City of Lansing for some trash to be removed from my backyard. Well, actually, it started on the side of my yard. My complaint is for the city because Eric's Refuge actually came on my property and stole. The only reason why they're not liable is because they have a contract through the city, and so the city permits them at their discretion to take what they feel is garbage. On the back of the truck, I don't actually know what pages or width of, or what, in what order, but on the back of this truck, as you can see, when the truck is empty, they have rakes and they have shovels and everything. They didn't clean up the front of my porch. Not only did they not clean up the front of my porch, if you all look at the things that they took from my property on the back of this truck, that's, that is all my grow equipment. Not only is it all my grow equipment, I have items on this paper that I was told to get out of my basement by the code enforcement. So some of these things, like I have a set of stairs that Eric's Refuge went past things that they knew was junk, and they took my property that was valuable. And so on the before and after pictures that you all have of the back porch, even the back porch is new because I was red, I was red flagged because they said my porch was bad. All the property on the back porch, I redid the back porch where you all can see it's new, that wood is laying in the back of my yard, and it is still there right now to this day, and that was in August of 2017. So, on the after picture, that if you all look on the back porch, you all can still see bales of things that should have been picked up by Eric's Refuge. These are a set of stairs that went to my basement that I was coated on in 2017. When I took the stairs up from my basement to replace them, they're right here still on the back porch. So in 2018, when Eric's Refuge came, they left these stairs that clearly I have marked by code enforcement that should have been picked up, and they left that, but they took all my valuable stuff. And there was three things they were supposed to take. They were supposed to take a bed, a tire, and a bed headboard. When they got through, if you all look on, on, on the paper, when they got through, they took all of my valuable things, and they left junk. So it's like somehow Eric's Refuge should be held accountable. They, I have never seen them at a meeting. No one is here to represent them or ask them, why would you all take these things and leave stuff?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, and then Chi Jing Hu.
I'll pass it out.
She's passing.
Okay, she, Chi Jing Hu, and then Victor Stelmachenko.
Yes, thank you. My name is Ezier. Do you have all, do you have all the, the new pictures I sent it to you? The new pictures that's not in the file?
We, we have this that was passed out to us. Thank you.
I have not started yet.
It's your, it's your time, man.
First of all, we're not a slam landlord as what we were portrayed. All code violations on our record were on this land contract property and during two eviction periods. We had given chances to two families. One was having a baby, and one had a two weeks old baby. Property has double lots and fenced in big garden, ideal for those new families. However, after two to seven months non-payment, we filed eviction. Secondly, land contract were not registered through the city. It's still legal, legally binding contract. Thus, we cannot touch appeared junk trash in the yard until we have a legal possession, legal possession of the property. Also, many were their personal belongings and picked up by them, their relatives and friends. Later, dispute, a dispute August 7th non-compliance of exterior property code violation issued on July 30th and the city contractor activities on July 10th. On the questioned date, our handyman had removed the violated matter within two days after August 2nd, when we took possession of property. That is why none of the trash on July 30th, see the picture, July 30th, violated pictures. July 30th violation pictures were on picture on August 10th. On August 7th, code violation compliance evaluation, picture from our neighbor took on the evening of the same day showed a great pile of stuff removed from the house, which was obvious different from the July 30th trash violation. On July 30th trash, and on July, on August 7th, on the July 7th was a on the July 7, it was gone and replaced by new debris from eviction after August 2. Three, code violation was on the exterior. Pictures show our city contractor entered into the interior structure, which was not without owner's awareness and permission. Four, emergency cleanup requested on trash accumulated was not on before July 30, but was long gone, which was after August 2 due to eviction.
Thank you.
You finish?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next is Victor Stelmachenko.
You finish this. No, you finish, finish this. Finish reading this.
Okay, I want to read this stupid thing. First of all, I'm not very good speaking. Honey, please. I'm not very good at speaking. I can write better than speaking. My name is Victor Stelmachenko. As my wife said, we're not landlords as you portray us. Doesn't matter, because it's already decided. First of all, I can write better. Therefore, I'm going to write what I have to say, because we received the papers a couple of days ago to wish to reply. Three minutes is not enough, impossible. It requires I should write something in writing to each one of the council. Please don't argue, please. And that not only the councilors, but also the city attorney gets it. Because the papers that we picked up a few days ago that was given to us, and in the pictures, it clearly shows it's fabrication to create a situation whereby the contractors allegedly came to clean when there was nothing to clean. Because what we were doing after we gained possession legally, but they ordered the court, because we could not do anything to the premises until after you had possession, because some of the stuff was belonged to the people. Now, I was sent to you a writing, a reply to those charges that you made in writing, including a copy to the attorney. Okay, the pictures, and one of the pictures, for example, either the date, the time, is altered because the sun was shining, but they put down 23, which is 11 o'clock at night. So those pictures were altered. Right, to show that they were doing the work. But in fact, when you take a picture, photographs, the sun shines. It could be 11 o'clock, but not at night. 23 is at night. Okay. What about a red tag? On a red tag, when the officer, code officer, applied, came on the 7th, all of that was gone. Red tag is in violation, in fact, because how could she go in, evaluate the status of the premises unless she could get in? We could not get in the place. We had to get special key to get in, because it was boarded up in the front. We had to go through the back, and there was no way anybody could have gotten in and see how bad the premises were. They were not. Messy, yes, because there were messy people. And it took us a long time to get them out through legal process, because, okay. Anyway, I will send you, I'm not very good speaker. She is better than I am. Okay, it's already. As I said.
Thank you, sir.
Papers.
Thank you.
Because what you put as slam landlords.
Thank you.
Is fabrication.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Mary Reynolds.
I'm not going to talk.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Then we are to the consent agenda.
Please, President Spatafor.
Madam President, I will be removing from the consent agenda item 1A. I'm sorry. Removing from the consent agenda items 1A, all the items in category 2 and all the items in category 3, leaving on the consent agenda items 1B, C, D, E, F, and G, all tributes that have already been presented, and we're just adopting them today for the Women's, the Professional Women's Annual Founder's Day Awards Ceremony.
If you could just read the names of the people, that would be great, and then we'll...
There's a lot of names here. I apologize to anyone who's watching this, and if I say your name incorrectly. Itiana Davis-Eckles, Kentaha Johnson, Jalen Sanders, Stephen Lamont Lonzo, Lisa Young, and Fred Porter.
All right.
And Pastor Iris Cotton.
Thank you.
I move the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the consent agenda. Councilmember Spitzley.
I just wanted to mention that I did attend this over the weekend. And there was presentations by the Sexton High School Choir. What a great group of young people. And they were also at the Lansing Promise. And, you know, they, and their bandleader, Joshua Hicks, who I went to high school with, Go Everett Vikings, he's their bandleader. But just very, very inspiring for these young people. It was a great event. The National Association of Negro Business and Professional Women's, Professional Women's Annual Founder's Day was a great event to recognize not only these young people, but just, you know, the businesswomen here in town. And so I just wanted to just kind of give a shout out to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm glad you were able to attend. I had to cover for Councilmember Jackson, and so I was not able to be there. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, same sign.
We are to the Committee on General Services.
And Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Our last General Services meeting was quite lengthy, and there were a lot of claims. The first one we have before us is Claim 1641. This is Victor Stelmachenko and David Wang for $2,658 in trash fees at 4928 Hughes Road. We just heard from the couple that owns the house. We had quite a lengthy discussion regarding this claim. The property was cited on July 30, 2018, with a deadline of August 6, 2018. Code returned on August 7, when the violations were still present. They reached out to the owners and offered to extend the date to August 10. On August 10, there was still a violation, and they were informed that the city was going to clean that day. While the cleaning people were on the site, a neighbor came over with a phone stating that the owner was on the phone and relayed a message that the court said, as he had stated, they could not remove anything. Mr. Brewer did acknowledge that this did not go to the Claims Review Committee because it was over $1,000. The owners went on to claim that the tenant was cleaning before the city contractor showed up, and that the court did not authorize the eviction until August 2, 2019. The owner had all the belongings outside and picked up later. I asked if the property was still red tagged. Mr. Sanford confirmed it was. Mr. Sanford was asked if the cleaning crew was there when the city contractor arrived. He confirmed that, yes, they were, but that that cleanup person said they did not have the capability to clean up, so the city crew did the job. Mr. Jackson looked at the photos and asked Mr. Sanford how many times his office called the owner. Mr. Sanford stated that on August 7 and August 10, Councilmember Jackson asked what court the owner was in and directed them to clean up, to not clean up. And Mr. Stelmachenko stated it was in the building, and they didn't get the eviction release until August 2. He also denied getting any phone calls from code compliance. Councilmember Wood asked Ms. Hagan if there was trash around the property. No matter if it's a rental owner or land contract, that owner has the responsibility to clean it up. We went on and on, and it went back and forth that they swore that they didn't get the phone calls and that they weren't supposed to touch anything. After quite a lot of discussion, Mr. Brewer noted the total bill from Eric's Refuge was $2,393, and half of it would be $1,196. Councilmember Washington noted that the city still has to pay the charge and that there is no proof the owner had a dumpster there when the city contractor arrived. There was a dumpster, but there's no proof that they were able to clean it up. Please. In the past, they've been cited for front yard parking, grass, and failure to register. And the only reason I'm going into such depth with this is because this became a very contentious meeting, and I wanted to make sure that everybody had all the information. We did move to deny the claim for $2,658. Councilmember Wood was there. If you all have any questions, maybe she can help me fill in the blanks. But it was lengthy, and it was confusing.
So we have a motion. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of denying the claim, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is the claim disposition of Claims 1660. This is Fairlene Wilson for $1,414. The original amount was $1,714, and this is at 921 Shepherd. The date of violation was for 1918 with a compliance date of 5/5/18. The reinspection, the violations were still present at the reinspection. He confirmed that the Claims Review Board heard this on 2/20/19 and reduced the original amount by $300. It was lowered because of the photos and hours indicated on the contractor's invoice. They acknowledged the proposed reduction, but claimed they never saw a notice and that they... This is a situation where it was an elderly woman, and she has since been put into a care facility, and she really did not have the capacity at that time to acknowledge that there was a violation, and certainly she wouldn't have had the capacity to clean it up. What we ended up, her son and her daughter did come to the meeting, and what we ended up proposing was that we would waive the administrative fee, and we waived something else. At the end, we took the lowering of the initial $300. We waived the administration fee with the new amount owing of $574.50. This was agreeable to the son and the daughter. In fact, they were very grateful. But because of the special circumstances, we did take them into consideration. So in that, I would ask that we deny the claim for the new amount of $574.50.
And just for clarification, this was a recommendation that came from code compliance based on the information that was provided to us. So the amount of the claim was for $1,139.50, and by reducing it, we would deny the balance, which is $574.50, which they would be responsible for paying. So with that, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam.
Before you start, I do want to apologize. I'll double check with our staff, but normally, we have been giving these claims to City TV to have up on the TV as we talk about them so that you're able to see, as well as the public, what that looks like. For some reason, we don't see them up there tonight, so I will follow up to find out. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is a claim that came before us. It's Claim Appeal 1670, 2324 Maplewood. The violation was cited on November 29, 2018, with a compliance date of 12/6/18. On 12/7/18, the violations were still present. The contractor arrived, and he noted that the couch in the photos was not from the site. It was something further. They did come, they appealed, they stated that they did not get the letter. They stated they were out of town, and they were not aware that the tenant had moved out until they came home, and those were the items that the tenant put out. We did explain the procedure, and there was brief discussion. And we asked that, I am asking that we move the resolution to deny this claim in the amount of $440.
We have a motion on this claim. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. We have another claim appeal before us, 1666. This is 1008 Hickory Street. We heard from Mr. Simpson. The property was cited on 11/30, 2018, with a compliance date of December 7, 2018. There was a recheck on December 10, 2018. The contractor arrived on December 11 and called for authorization of additional yardage. We are recommending denial of this claim. Mr. Brewer stated that the Claims Review Committee did see the claim on February 20, 2019, and based on the information, recommended a reduction of one hour and five yards, taking it from $949 to $689. So you've heard from Mr. Simpson. I believe you have pictures in front of you showing that it was cleaned up. You saw the condition of the property. And with that, I am bringing forward the resolution to deny the claim in the amount of $689, and that is granting the $260 that was initially removed. With that, I would move the resolution to deny the claim.
We have a motion on the resolution. And again, this claim is for $949. Based on the recommendation of the Claims Review, it was reduced by $260. So the balance of the claim that is being asked to be denied would be $689. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. And I ask this only because Mr. Simpson was here, and he did mention it. So the allegation that materials from his grow operation were also taken, was that addressed at the committee meeting as well?
Yes, they were plastic tubs.
Okay. Thank you.
They were plastic containers that were out on the porch that were taken at that time. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, again, this would be denying the balance of this claim of $689. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. The next thing we have before us is an application for community funding for Churchill Downs Community Association. They have requested $315 to defray costs for city rental equipment and a generator associated with their CDCA annual picnic. And with that, I would move the resolution to grant them the $315.
We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously. Councilmember Washington.
Thank you, Madam President. The next thing we have before us is an application for community funding for the South Lansing Farmers Market. They are requesting $250 to defray costs for city rental equipment associated with their event. I believe this is, again, for the bounce house, and I asked them why they weren't asking for the larger amount as Colonial Village, and it's because they don't need the generator. So with that, I would move the resolution to grant the $250 to the South Lansing Farmers Market.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. This was requested by the Farmers Market Manager, Kathy Toby. But since it is a program of my nonprofit, I'm going to move to recuse.
We have a motion to recuse Councilmember Dunbar from this vote. All in favor of her recusal, say aye. Aye, pose. With that, we now have the mo- With that, we now have the motion to approve the funding for the kids' day at the South Lansing Farmers Market. All those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes with the recusal. Thank you.
Okay, we are to the Committee of the Whole.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, the resolution before us sets a public hearing for the special assessment on the Red Cedar Flood Plane, and that hearing is set to be on May 13th at 7:00 PM, City Hall Chambers, where we will consider the establishment of the Red Cedar Flood Plane, and I emphasize the word "consider" because we've had considerable amount of discussion in Committee of the Whole in a couple of weeks in a row about whether or not that assessment will go forward, but we want to keep the process moving to, if it does go forward, to make sure it gets on the tax rolls in time. So the clerk will send out notice to those residents affected, and I know that the administration and the city attorney were trying to get us some answers on the questions we had at Committee of the Whole about how we could help possibly defray the cost for some of the residents in that assessment district.
All right, we have a motion on setting the public hearing for the 13th. Are there any other questions or concerns? The only comment I would make is I know that Councilmember Washington has indicated that she wants to make sure that she gets a letter out to the residential properties affected on this, and we'll make sure that that gets done in line with, so that the public has an opportunity to understand what it is, along with a public notice that they'll be getting. So with that, all those in favor of setting the public hearing, say aye. Aye, posed. Okay, we still have enough to schedule the public hearing. We have the late item. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, the late item before us is a grant acceptance for the amount of $51,900 for the Lansing Pave the Way Project. As was discussed in Committee of the Whole, this is a research project on the impact of the construction of I-496 on Lansing's vibrant African-American community during the height of the Civil Rights Movement. The group doing the work will compile quite a bit of information for us to have as part of historical archives, but they need the funds appropriated to go forward with that work. So it is a late item because there was a misunderstanding as to whether the funds were actually already appropriated and the staff has already begun working. So we are moving it the same evening we saw it in Cow, but I would move the resolution.
All right, we have a motion in front of us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, same sign.
We are to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a grant acceptance. The grant name is the Office of Highway Safety Planning Pedestrian Bike Overtime Enforcement, and the recipient of the grant is the Lansing Police Department. The fund amount is $10,424. It will fund overtime costs for law enforcement officers to implement evidence-based, highly-visible enforcement program on pedestrian and bicycle safety laws to educate community members about safety in walking, cycling, and driving behaviors. So $7,501 of it is for personnel, and that's for overtime costs. There is a $1,598 match. There's also a sub-recipient of grant dollars, and that is Lansing Community College, which is $2,436 in federal funds and a $487 match by Lansing Community College for a total, grand total, grant amount of $10,424. And with that, Madam President, I move the resolution. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion before us. Do we have any questions or concern? Councilmember Washington.
I just have a really quick question. Councilwoman Spitzley, how do they intend to do enforcement? Is this jaywalkers or people that are riding their bicycles incorrectly? I don't understand.
Well, I think it's a combination of all. They talked about that last year there was over 400 bike accidents and about that same amount for pedestrian accidents.
It's for vehicle drivers.
And I think, yeah, I mean, I haven't ran into a car lately, so I think it is for cars, you know, to watch out for pedestrians when they are in the walkway, watch out for the bikes when the bikes are in the pathway, and it's also to provide funding, overtime funding, for the police officers to also enforce our bike paths and our walking paths. That's what I understand.
Okay.
And again, we're partnering with Lansing Community College as well.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yeah, that was my take on it. I remember we were joking about like whether or not it was car-bike, bike-pedestrian, and then we were making jokes about two pedestrians that run into each other. You never know.
But I think that...
Oh, yeah. And I'm not sure, yeah. I don't think it's focused on jaywalking. I do think it is focused on vehicular interactions with bikers and pedestrians.
I think that...
I appreciate it.
Clarification is, when you said enforcement, you did now just say that those dollars are for LPDs, so that will mean that they will have special, just like seat belts and those types of things, they'll have special days that they'll be focused on that. So we have a motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, same sign, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That is the yellow sheet in the back, and then we'll be picking that up in just a couple of seconds. And in the meantime, we're to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move that all items be considered as being read in full and the proper referrals be made by the president.
I have a motion before us. All those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously.
Okay, we have letters from the city clerk regarding minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
Letters from the mayor regarding the appointment of Brianna McGary to the Medical Marijuana Commission.
Committee of the Whole.
Grant acceptance, pave the way, federal grant.
Committee of the Whole, an internal auditor, and placed on file.
And communications and petitions, claim appeal from Scott Cohen for 440 and trash fees at 640 East Jolly Road.
And that'd be General Services.
We are to motion of excused absence.
Do we have a motion for excused absent? Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move that all absent members be excused.
We have a motion for Councilmember Jackson. All those in favor say aye. Aye, posed, passes unanimously.
We are two remarks by councilmembers.
Are there any comments? Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes, I'm sorry I did not say this at the beginning of the meeting, but I would be remiss if I did not mention that it was great to see our school district, our students, and our community on display at the Lansing Promise Dinner last week. The performances, the speeches, the students was very inspirational, and it was great to be there. I know the mayor was there, Councilmember Spitzley was there, and I'm sorry if I missed anybody else who was there, but it was a really good evening for the school district. I don't know how much they raised, but we've talked about how over 1,000 scholars have gone through the program now and have benefited from our community's generosity and largesse, so great evening for the community.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, mayor?
I was actually going to say the same thing, but I also would like to commend the Lansing Promise Dinner was incredible, and just seeing the kids from all three, I know Councilwoman Spitzley mentioned the Sexton Choir, and all three of them were there, and to see the passion from people like Justin Sheehan, who was incredible, Kelly Dean, and all three of our schools. It was a fun night. I definitely leave that event every night extremely energized and excited about our kids and our schools, so it was a fantastic night, and I would like to commend all of the folks who participated in putting that together. It's not easy, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are to public comment. We have Loretta Stanaway and Mary Reynolds.
Okay, first, I would like to say thank you to the council because you did do some digging tonight. You did show some initiative to look at the numbers and not just accept them as blank and for granted, so I appreciate that. For the mayor, there are a lot of people who don't get your press releases, they aren't on social media, they don't read the newspapers, they can't afford a $68 a month subscription to the LSJ, and they don't have access to sites that are paywalled on the internet either. So just please be aware. On the Lepfa presentation, I do have a few things I'd like to say. First off, really, a margarita fest, we're supporting that with our tax dollars, please. And second, for the public, because there was not a lot of information that was visible on the displays or brought out in the presentation, the civic, or the Lansing Center is still running a three-quarter of a million dollar loss annually, and $338,378,000 of that was attributed to professional services, which never was explained what that included. The stadium is running a half a million dollars net loss, and on their presentation, they only included revenues of $8,500 labeled miscellaneous. There was nothing else. Maybe they missed putting it in there, but there was nothing else on the stadium accounting to show what the revenues projected for the stadium would be. On golf, they're showing $130,000 deficit, but again, in there, there was missing information. There was nothing about the 2017 operating expenses given to compare to the revenue for that year. Common Ground did a disappearing act. There was nothing in their report financially about Common Ground, whether it made money, lost money, how much it lost, how many years in a row it's lost, et cetera. There's also nothing about the city market in terms of its revenues or expenses for the last fiscal year. It fell off the face of the earth along with Common Ground. There was some talk about rebranding Lepfa, and just one person's opinion, don't tilt at windmills. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Reynolds.
I'm slower this week, you guys. Well, ladies and gentlemen, how y'all doing? You know, I've lived in this town a long time. I lived outside of the town, then I came back, and now my grandchildren live here and my great-grandchildren. And I thank God every Monday night that we have people sitting on the diocese that thinks about the kids that can't go to Detroit to see the game or go to Grand Rapids to see the waterfalls or like that, that we've got some of that stuff right in our own hometown. Because we're the capital city, we're the city of Lansing, and I can call this my hometown, and I can look at these people here tonight and think they really care about the people that can't make the big bucks to go other places. I don't believe, because I pray to God every night and morning, I don't believe that those specific entertainments that my great-grandson goes to, and he says, Grandma, I went all by myself and my dad. He went by himself. And he was so happy, and he was so thrilled, and at eight years of age to go to a ballgame with your dad and not have to go all the way to Detroit, that is so super. You can't pay money to get a look like that on a kid's face. So I say thank you from all the young grandkids and all the dads and moms that get to go, because if it wasn't for you people sitting up there and your foresightness, it wouldn't have happened, and I thank you from a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was our final speaker.
And again, I just want to remind the public that we do have a Committee of the Whole on May 2nd at 6 o'clock at the Foster Center in room 213, and this is the public's opportunity to discuss the budget, and we do want to hear from you, so we encourage you to come out and talk with us. Thank you. We are adjourned.[1626.04]